I'm going to call this Board of Alderman Meeting to order. If you'll please stand with me and say the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, a roll call, please.
All right. Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
She's here.
She's present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
And Alderman Bachman is absent.
And Mayor Bowman is present.
Mayor Bowman, yes.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any ceremonial matters tonight, so we'll move to public participation. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board, you may step forward and do so. Just state your name and address to the microphone for the clerk, please.
I'm John Foster. I live at 2619 Duncan Street here in Harrisonville, Missouri. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Bowman, and good evening to the board members. I feel like I'm a little handicapped. I want to visit a little bit about the Harrisonville Villas, and I've got to condense it down to four minutes instead of an hour. Feel like I'm going to a gunfight with paper watts. That project is one underway. It's been, in my opinion, a theater of corruption has been around that project from inside of City Hall ever since it started, but that's just my opinion. But I would like to visit with you about that project that's located on the Jefferson Parkway. It's my understanding this project is a Missouri Housing Development Commission endeavor, and most of you know that the commission is under scrutiny. Former Governor Gretchen stopped the funding on that. Governor Parsons has yet to release it, so there's no funding for senior housing because of several different things, and if you follow the money racket, well, you can understand why that's there. Projects such as these are evaluated by the plans and the drawings that's proposed by the owner, and the amount alone is based on the site, the area, the building's design, and the building's specifications. That's how values on projects are normally done. It's been my experience in the construction industry, modification, change, material specs to be approved by the loan institution. In this case, it should have been the Missouri Housing Development Corporation. Those changes altered the valuation of the whole project. When you don't build a street, it's not as valuable as it was when it was appraised. I'd like to remind the board that the major unintended consequences exist on this. Number one is every real estate deed that is done in the state of Missouri, you pay a $3 fee that goes to the Missouri Housing Development Corporation. That's what sustains a part of it. Now, of all 114 counties in the state, and the city of St. Louis had announced several thousand, several million dollars. Last year, in Cass County, it was somewhere between 125,000 and 150,000, I was told by the local Recorder's Office. The agency supervises $150 million a year for this, and it's through for low-income housing tax credit programs. So the people that participate in this gets a federal tax credit out of it. I do not know how that works. There's probably somebody on this council that can explain it in detail to you. This program is supposed to create 2,500 low-income units in Missouri each year. Number two problem with unintended consequences is that the landowner adjoining the project does not have a paved access to his property, as our subdivision ordinance called for, and the original plans called for that. Number three, when the adjoining landowner wants to develop more property, who's going to build the street? Is the taxpayers of Harrisonville going to pay for that 75-foot? If you're going to put a $4 or $5 million project in, I can imagine we'd knuckle under and pay for it. Number four, it's my opinion that there's some major backroom going on before and during the construction of the villas. Most of the backroom dealings will not be known or changed, but the street deal can be. It has been the opinion of many of the people that the vote to wait for that construction was not an illegal vote, and our city attorney pointed that out tonight. The board should be required, should require the street to be completed or escrow one and a half times the bid cost of today's crisis, so the city can complete the street. This appears to me to be fair to all concerned, the adjoining landowner, the citizens in Harrisonville, and the citizens of Missouri. Any questions for me? I thank you for your time. I hope I didn't burn up more than four minutes.
Thank you, John. Seeing no one, I'll close public participation, and we'll move on to our agenda items. At this point, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones. And the first thing is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Alderman Work Session from July 1st.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner to approve the minutes of the Board of Alderman Work Session July 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen's regular meeting, July 1st, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson and a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the minutes of the Board of Alderman Regular Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Now moving on to the agenda items, we have a park board appointment. Mr. Welch.
The mayor would like to appoint Brett Reese to the park board, and that's to fill the vacancy by Don Allen, who has resigned and left the state.
And Mr. Reese is in the audience with us. Good evening.
Hello.
A former Alderman and former board liaison to the park board. I spoke with Mr. Deal. He said he thought that Mr. Reese would be an excellent, excellent park board member. So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Excuse me. I need to stay in the room.
Okay.
I'll leave the room.
Alderman Reese is seen as leaving the room. So I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner to approve the park board appointment of Brett Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Brett, and welcome to the park board.
Thank you.
Okay, you can do that.
Okay, moving on to Council Bill 45. Mr. Mauer.
Council Bill 45 is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign an agreement with Golden Valley Tractor for the purchase of a radial arm mower for the Harrisonville Parks Recreation Department, establish an effective date thereof.
Mr. Deal, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the board. As stated in the memo, the park board has approved staff's recommendation for the purchase of their radial arm mower, and this mows different areas in our parks, along hills, roadside areas, and along our lakefront in City Park. The past mower is over 10 years old and needs replacement, so it was approved for this year's budget purchase. The low bidder is Golden Valley Tractor in Harrisonville, and this comes with a recommended, what is called a lift float kit, which helps the mower to follow the contour of the ground, and it's less manual work for the operator. So the kit is $585, and added to the bid of $15,706. The total purchase, purchase, excuse me, is $16,291. I believe that there was previous misprint in the resolution, but the figure was listed in the bid price of the $15,706, and added to the $585 equals the $16,291 requested, and the total budget is $20,000, so it's under the budget, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Deal?
I approve.
Okay, so we're making a motion to approve. Just so you understand, we're approving the council bill that's on your dais, not what's in your computer or in your packet, but we've made a correction to allow for the float kits, so make sure that we're voting on this one. Okay, now I'll take a motion.
I approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Miller and a second from Alderman Milner to approve Council Bill 45. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 45 is approved and becomes Resolution 032. Council Bill 46.
Council Bill 46 is an ordinance to repeal Ordinance 3411 and enact and lue thereof a new ordinance regarding an established procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials, and to amend time in which candidates for office are required to file disclosure statements with the city clerk. First reading of Council Bill 46.
Mr. Welch.
So this is just a housekeeping matter that is required since we have it in our ordinances, that we re-adopt this every two years, so you're re-adopting the conflict of interest ordinance as required by the public commission.
Any discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson.
It's an ordinance.
I'm sorry.
I move it to the second reading.
Make the motion to move it to the second reading. Council Bill 46.
Then we'll take the roll call. Alderman Dickerson has moved to advance it to the second reading.
Your second.
And whose second is?
And his second is Alderman Turner.
Turner, all right. All right. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
What?
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman is absent. Now, you ready for a second reading?
I'm ready.
Council Bill 46 is an ordinance to repeal Ordinance 3411 and enact and lue thereof a new ordinance regarding an established procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials, and to amend the time in which candidates for office are required to file disclosure statements with the city clerk. Second reading of Council Bill 046.
Roll call.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman is absent.
Thank you. Council Bill 46 is approved and becomes ordinance number 3470. Council Bill 47.
Council Bill 47 is an ordinance authorizing a variance for the developer of the Harrisonville Villas, a variance of the approved subdivision plat by not requiring timber drive to extend to the west property line. First reading of Council Bill 047.
I move to adjourn the rule and pass Council Bill 47 to the second reading.
I would like to.
Second.
You want to pass it to second? I would like to leave it so we can have further discussion on this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule and advance it to its second reading. Does the mover wish to withdraw?
I just have one question. I thought we wanted to finish this up, and we were going to do this. If you want to dismiss this, you got to withdraw. If you want to ask, you got to withdraw. Okay, I'll withdraw.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn.
Do we get to ask questions now?
Certainly.
Why aren't we going to? Yes, I thought we were going to vote on this tonight. You have Ms. Park, she lives in Springfield, and you have all these people here, and I think the future is kind of hanging in the balance.
I mean.
Mayor Bowman.
Yes, Alderman, sorry.
I mean, whether she's here or not, I mean, this is just a housekeeping issue. I mean, it comes to us with the recommendation of the plan design, and she was totally at pass and through, we've given her work, and I've put it down for 10 years. I mean, if we go back and adapt that, then, I mean, what does that guy just look like? We were told, done right around, she was told she didn't have to finish. And if we go back and change what we say, here's to say we don't go back and change others, she said we don't like, or would the, any new developers that want to come in, might not want to come in, and I said, well, they tell me that, but then they might change their mind and then have to. If we, if we don't just do the housekeeping, send it out, pass it, and be done, then it wouldn't look too good on us.
So.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Is it the pleasure of the board to just have the first reading and do further discussion and bring it back at the next board meeting to vote, or does the board wish to vote tonight?
I think we should vote. I'm ready to vote.
I mean, you've withdrawn your motion.
I'll make it again. But here's the thing, I thought we agreed that we were going to do this, and, well, it's been a few years all of our lives.
I would like for this to have further discussion. I feel like there's too many unanswered questions around this board.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have, we have a second, correct? To advance it to the second reading. So we need two-thirds of the majority, two-thirds of the board to approve that, so we can vote on that motion to advance it to its second reading.
Second reading.
Correct?
And then a no vote would mean it's going to roll to the next meeting, as compared to a yes vote would mean you're going to hear a second reading then tonight.
Would you like to explain all of us just sitting in here what all that means?
Would you like me to?
Certainly.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. So pursuant to Missouri statutes, before the city council or Board of Aldermen can pass an ordinance, it has to be read twice, and in this instance, typically, they, the Board of Aldermen can hear it once, discuss it, and then vote again, and then have that second reading in the same meeting, back-to-back, as you just heard a moment ago. However, when there's an issue that deserves more attention, perhaps there's questions that still remain, what they, often what the Board of Aldermen will do is they'll read it just one time, so that it won't come back for second reading and final decision for another, until the next meeting. In this instance, then, you have another two weeks for more study, more information to be given to the Board of Aldermen before they have to vote. So the issue of the moment is whether or not it's going to be heard twice tonight or just once.
Can I ask you something else? What's the advantage of finishing that road to the end of her property line, which ain't hardly any longer than the length of this building? What's the advantage of that?
Or is that what you're asking? See, we're not quite understanding. You had a vote and set something two years ago, and now you're coming back saying, two years ago, we voted on something that we weren't supposed to vote on, and now you're going to sit down and vote on it again?
I'm sorry, I'm the new city attorney. I'm the re, the rec, the city attorney that's back again, and so I'm the one who raised this issue, and what, and I'll be happy to explain. In Harrisonville, if the Board of Aldermen is going to pass an ordinance, they have to have five votes, and it takes five. And when this was passed two years ago, they only had four, and the city of Harrisonville has already been criticized by state officials, including the state auditor, for not following proper procedures. And one of the things that the state auditor even noted was passing an ordinance with only, that you needed five votes. And so, as Mr. Foster explained, this is a highly scrutinized program, and I don't want the city of Harrisonville to be subject to questions because what they did was passed on four votes. Now, I want you to understand, sir, that the city got bad legal advice, because the then-city attorney told them they could do it on four votes. But I provided to all of the Aldermen and the city an opinion from the Missouri Attorney General, and the Attorney General says it takes five votes. And so, it's real clear that what happened wasn't done properly. And so, I've asked this to be brought back for the Aldermen to consider, what are we going to do about it? And the rub for the moment is, I think, that you heard, perhaps you weren't here during the study session.
Right.
But the conflict portion is, okay, we allowed this project to go forward, it's a 75-foot road, and it's already in, people are living there, what do we do about that? But on the other hand, then what do we tell the next developer who doesn't want to finish the road and isn't, and doesn't want to comply with our city code? And I think what you're hearing from your, from your elected officials is, I don't know what the answer to that is, and I need another two weeks to discuss it, to try and figure out what the solution is.
Okay, so you messed up.
No.
Okay, no, no, not you particularly, but the board messed up.
No.
When they passed something with four votes. Somewhere along the line, something was done wrong.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. And now you're coming back and going to make a justification on that, but people made decisions, and they made development, and they did things on saying that what was going on was okay, but you had nothing under contract that said that our development needed to extend the road. Is that what I heard earlier to you?
No. No, I don't think so.
Well.
The original contract stated the road would be completed through the extension of the property line. That is the original contract.
But this, but the city officials granted her a variance.
Okay.
They granted her a variance, and so now what we've got is the variance is the bad legal advice, the legal advice of an attorney. There's two.
Okay, and that was on the city side of the problem.
Yeah.
Not that they didn't fulfill what they needed. They asked for the variance, and you gave it to her, and then now you're going to come back and say, two years later, then you should sit down and decide that Harrisonville made a decision two years ago, and that you should justify by entitling what you, the variance that you gave her two years ago, you should honor that now with the vote of five tonight.
Yeah, and that's why I.
And that's what we want.
I move it to the second reading, because we need, in my opinion, I'm not thinking of anybody else, but in my opinion, we need to clean this up tonight.
Right.
You can get on with her life, you got, won't have to come back up here again, and, you know, if it fails or passes, we should need to make a decision on what we're going to do with this, because we need to know, she needs to know, you need to know, well.
Right, so what part of this doesn't make any sense to this individual that asked to let's talk over, dock it over more?
My question is, I want to make sure that as a city, since we are correcting a problem that was created by past bad advice, we don't want to move forward again with bad advice. What we want to do is we want to sit down, we want to make sure that everything we do moving forward is done precisely and legally.
Okay.
So that it hasn't come back on us. And the one other thing I'd like to say at this point is, I feel very bad that you all were given advice that if we do something wrong here tonight, that it's going to cost you specifically money. And I, I think that's unconscionable, that that's what you were told, because that is not the intent.
No, that's not exactly. That we were told there's a possibility if our development needs to put out money, that they were going to variance, that you gave them a variance for.
And that they're.
If they have to put out that money.
Suck it up to you.
Where are they going to get the money from?
Yes.
Obviously, it falls back on to the people.
That's what we want to make sure.
And the small people.
That we don't have happen. That's why we need to make sure we have all of our debts in a row moving forward with this.
Okay.
Let's go through the lawyer that gave you wrong advice.
Excuse me, sir, just a moment. Mr. Mauer.
Quite honestly, sir, and ma'am, my bigger concern for you all is not that you'd be, you'd actually be required to pay for that road. It would be a significant number, but the far bigger risk to your properties and to your, and to your residences is that the MHDC is going to review this, is going to find an invalidity, and is going to declare the tax credits that sponsored this whole thing to be unlawful. And if you think that the state of Missouri won't walk back on something, and the state of Missouri won't look back two years and say, oh, yes, that's wrong, we're all crazy, because of course they will, and they do. And so, we want to make sure that what we do, we can get it right, so that you don't have that problem. This is a bigger concern than just the cost of the road. The, all of the tax credits that the state of Missouri granted on this are at risk, and it is no.
They granted them stating that there would be a road there when there wasn't a road already, right?
No, they granted them saying that there would be a road, and then the road didn't get built.
Okay. Because. Because there was a variance giving by this, by this, not this board, but a board in Harrisonville two years ago.
I got a question now. If that happens, then that responsibility falls back on this city for giving her the variance and giving her the go-ahead to finish her project.
No.
Right.
Quite honestly, I don't think so, because an illegal act is an illegal act, and her comment, during her comment about being, that there's a stopple, there is no such thing as a stopple on a city. You, the city, an illegal act by, by a city official is an illegal act. It is not binding on the municipality. So there is no such thing as a stopple on, on a city government. I mean, be, well, and the reason why is because, I mean, think of all the damage that could be done if you have one, or two, or three, or in this instance, four, less than the required, run amok. And so, no, that there is no such thing. But in trying to protect these people's homes, in trying to protect this development, we need to make sure that we get it, that we get it right. That's why I brought it back.
Wouldn't they come back on you and not the developer? If the board gave a variance, then they're at fault, if it was illegal or not, okay? So, so the people that put out the money for the senior living, or whatever you said, would come back and, and take our livelihood away, why, why would it fall back on us when, when the board gave the variance?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it would fall on you liability-wise. What I'm suggesting is.
You said that they may close the facility or not give us funds for it.
No, I didn't say that.
No.
No. What I said is they would, they could invalidate the tax credits.
Invalidate it, okay.
Validate the tax.
Is that the same thing as not being able to have our community center, I mean, our living development?
How that would all, the waterfall that might happen, and all those dominoes tip over, I can't begin to tell you where it would stop, but I don't want to be the one that tips over the first one. And when we take an action, we want to make sure that we do it right.
Okay.
And that's the question why, in answer to your question, ma'am, what is happening is, I think that's why several of your elected officials are saying, I'm not ready to vote on this.
I want to make sure we get it done right, to where nothing comes back on anybody, and that we follow the procedures that are set in place by the state to make sure we do this correctly.
Okay, you've already done it wrong once, and you get the chance to go back and make it right. I got you.
Sometimes you got to go back and correct your errors.
Yeah, but sometimes you, you got to pay the penalty for one, okay? And if they made an error and it wasn't you, that's fine, but I can't see where it's going to cause anybody any problems to stick with what you voted on before, with four votes, and just make it five tonight, and hold back, and then be responsible for taking bad advice or whatever. I mean, if somebody gives me bad advice and I do something, then I'm going to pay the penalty because I'm responsible for it.
That's what we're trying to avoid here.
But it's already been done. What I, what I can see is that you need to stick with what you, the decisions that you made before, and deal with it, or try to get people to deal with you on, on the situation.
We're really glad for your comments, and we're really happy that you came tonight. Would you mind giving us your names so we can have it for the record?
My name's Tom Blecher.
Spelled last name?
B-L-E-C-H-E-R, and I live at 507 Timber Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Blecher.
You're welcome.
Good discussion. All right, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 47 to its second reading. Is there any further discussion before we vote on that?
If a no vote on the motion would mean it goes to the next meeting, a yes vote would mean then you're going to hear a second reading on it tonight.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Turner, am I correct? To suspend the rule, pardon me, and move Council Bill 47 to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
No.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
No.
Alderman Milner.
No.
Alderman Dorhoff.
No.
Alderman Bachman is absent.
So that motion fails, and we will advance Council Bill 47 to our next board of aldermen meeting. Thank you very much. We'll move on to aldermen and committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff?
This Saturday morning, we're hosting a town hall at the United Methodist Church. We're going to have Bobby on, the Shepherd's Food Pantry's there. Everybody's invited, so please come out.
Thank you very much. Alderman Milner?
Yeah.
Alderman Reese?
I just want to repeat what we said about the town hall meeting. We had a great time learning about things that occur in the city, and it's a thing that helps me every time I go to understand the depth of the people in this city and how they really do care about each other, which leads me into, I wasn't going to do this, but I've got to do it anyway. All of you folks that are out there, please understand, please understand that not a one of us wants to raise your hand. It's not something we want to have known. It's not something that we want to chop heads off with. What we want to do is make it right on both sides, and all this is going to do is give us time to look at all the facts and make sure that what we're doing is the right thing for the city and the right thing for you. And I hope you can understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Miller?
Just an update from the park board meeting last week. The weed removal from the city lakes is ongoing and it's doing well. I was by there the other day and you can obviously tell it's improving. Fourth of July went over well, all things considered, with the weather we had. They were a little late getting the fireworks off, but the weather did cooperate and we did finally get it done just in the nick of time. The golf tournament, Parks and Rec is sponsoring their annual golf tournament this year, is on July 26th. This year, all the proceeds is going to the dog park that the Harrisonville Park Board has approved to start fundraising for. And Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a meeting on Thursday, July 18th at 6:00 PM in reference to the dog park.
That is correct.
Moving forward, there's a possibility of three locations and two of our city parks and another location, so if you can, please come to that meeting, Thursday, 18th at 6:00 PM at the community center. We really want to get this dog park going and it's, we're going to start fundraising for that in earnest here, and we've already got some money started with us, so we're doing well with that. Total membership is still 4,300-plus this past month, so we're doing extremely well on the community center at this time. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Dickerson?
At our last meeting for the wall, I think we forgot to mention one person that was very important to that wall, Steve Teedman. He did a lot of work, his decision to bring that to Harrisonville. Who? Who? Steve Teedman. Okay. And he did a lot of work to bring that to us from a request from his friend, and I just want to give him some credit for a job well done. I know there was a lot of people that participated in it, and I think he deserves a, you know, a lot of credit for what he did.
I appreciate that, Alderman, and I would just call your attention to the minutes from the last meeting where I did make comments about the moving wall, and I did acknowledge John Foster, who was in the audience. And then the notes say that Ms. Mayor Bowman also recognized Steve Teedman, Ed Robertson, and many others for their efforts, so thank you. Alderman Davidson?
Nothing.
Alderman Turner? Thank you. City Administrator?
You have my updated report, but you can scratch item four. We're not ready to send that out yet, so we're not going to do that as of this time. Household hazardous waste collection in June, 179 vehicles dropped off about 22,000 pounds of waste. Biggest item was car batteries, I'm sorry, biggest item was paint, car battery is the second, and most of the folks found out about the pickup form of the newsletter. So we're still sending that out with the bills, and I think it's very effective, so we're going to keep doing it. Do you have any other questions?
And then the monthly municipal court report is in your package. Questions from the media? I'm sorry? All right, no questions from the media, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Reese to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?